Good morning, it's 10:15 in. 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 The Council of the City Council is here today to welcome the members of the City Council who have contributed to the success of the city. Good morning, it's 10:15 in. 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 The Council of the City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us for members of the public unable to attend council meetings. We can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is now 10:20 a.m., and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we have a number of special presentations and introductions to be made. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Labonge.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, members, and good morning to the public here. Standing next to me is someone who served forty years with the City of Los Angeles, John Frankel. He's retiring after that long career, and you could see the maze of activity that he's had over those forty years, starting in 1963, when he started his work with the City of Los Angeles. He was born in Seattle, Washington, graduated from the University of California at Berkeley in 1960 with a Bachelor's of Science degree in Business Administration. And he continued his education in executive management here at UCLA. He started his career in '63 as an administrative assistant in the Department of Recreation and Parks. Over the course of time, he served in our Bureau of Management for Employee Services. He also served as the general manager, excuse me, John, of El Pueblo de Los Angeles State Historic Park in 1966, while also serving in the Bureau of Management Services. He worked with our Department of Transportation in all the administrative posts, and then finally, and one of the first guys I remember to walk in the halls of City Hall when I started twenty-eight years ago, with the Department of Public Works. He has a wonderful wife of forty-five years, Judith, which is a great compliment, a great job, a great career for forty years, but a great partnership with your wife Judith for forty-five years, and his four sons, Jack, Jim, David, and Mark. And he also has five grandchildren. He has been a very dedicated and committed public employee for these forty years, doing the work of the people, making sure things happen in the right way. So, John, it is my pleasure, joined by Janice Hahn and also our President Alex Padilla, to salute you for forty years of contributing to the betterment of Los Angeles. You're a fine man, John Frankel. Congratulations. There you go, right there. Would you like to say a few words?
I suppose, in a sense, I've mentally rehearsed what to say up here for the last umpteen years, and I've seen, unfortunately, too many people string out half an hour of your time, which is not appropriate. So I would just like to say it's been a good run. I enjoyed it. I think I've contributed to the city, and I thank you all. Bye-bye.
John, thank you very much. And now it's my honor, Mr. President, if I could go two-for-two. We do have a special invitation for all of us here in Los Angeles as we celebrate Bastille Day 2003 with a wonderful program planned for the beautiful area out at Page Museum in the county. We have the distinguished Council General from France here and his wonderful special assistant. And if I could read this proclamation first before I call on you. On the fourteenth of July will be the actual Bastille Day, but here in Los Angeles, because we are so much in drain with the heart of Hollywood, we could always do Take Two. So we're going to do Take One on the day before with our celebration in the Miracle Mile at the Page Museum for Bastille Day. And it's under the auspices of our fine Council General here in Los Angeles. And this mission of this year's celebration is to promote French heritage and culture and reinforce the underlying ties between the French and the American people. And whereas around over five thousand people are expected to this wonderful celebration, making it one of the most well-attended community festivals, this entertainment will be various dancers, French music, Tahitian dancers, wonderful food, wonderful spirits, and a wonderful place at the Page Museum. So I, as a member of City Council who has no French heritage, although they came by assas serain to Berlin before they got to Los Angeles, so I got French heritage in there, but I picked up a lot of Irish in me too on the way over the ocean. It's my honor to salute the wonders of Bastille Day 2003, and please join me in this salute.
The Council General Digne de Dieu. Mr. President, Councilmembers, Digne de Tom Labonge, thank you for this proclamation. And as Council General here, I am very thankful and pleased to be here among you. I will not take too long of your time. You know, I could also speak a long time about Bastille Day, which we are going to celebrate that Sunday. But I will only focus on one point, one thing about Bastille Day. Bastille Day, besides being the national feast of the French people, besides being also official celebration, is the first of all a feast and the feast of friendship. And I underline this word, friendship, today, and because it's a friendship, it is going to be the friendship between here in Los Angeles, between the French people and the American people. And in this very year, 2003, it seems to me as Council General that it is important to celebrate this traditional longstanding friendship between France and the United States. I have no political statement here, I heard, but we all know, there is no secret, that our relationships were somewhat rocky during the last month. But fortunately, we have turned the page for the last weeks, and we have got good track to renew, resume our traditional friendship. And on Bastille Day, this Sunday will be a great event. And we are going to cherish this traditional friendship with a lot of entertainment and, of course, a lot of food, French food. And I really invite you, all of you here, to come and to celebrate with this French-American friendship on this very day, on this Sunday, next Sunday. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, all of you. Thank you, Tom.
Council General, thank you. But also, what is great too, and you know, we salute the friendship of our sister cities between Bordeaux, France, and Los Angeles in our longstanding relationship. But behind every community event, whatever district it is in the city, there is someone very special. And what we have here is Pasquale Fortunat, who is the wonderful person who puts us all together. For a few words, Pasquale.
Just a few words, because they've said it all, both Jean-Luc and Tom. But I just wanted to show you the poster, and we chose a Turkish artist who did this beautiful painting. And it represents what we both, French and American, long for, which is freedom for the red birds, equality for the white ones, and the blue ones are representing justice. So I think both our countries are looking forward for that. And I welcome you, all of you, on Bastille Day, on the Sunday, the thirteenth, in the beautiful gardens of the Page Museum. And I want to thank Tom Labonge, because it's really been helpful in getting this event together.
Well, you betcha, and I also want to say, Mr. Garcetti, you know who the most famous French immigrant is to Los Angeles? No, Monsieur de Longprey. De Longprey Park, De Longprey developed in Hollywood. And it was at De Longprey Park, I want to let you know, that "Travelin' Man" was written for Ricky Nelson. Sitting on a bench there was the artist who wrote "Travelin' Man." So we travel the world in Los Angeles, we all end up here, and we celebrate the wonderful culture. Come to Page Museum this Sunday, anytime between 12:00 and 6:00 p.m. Not only enjoy the wonderful county art museums and the Page Museum, but also come to Bastille Day and celebrate the friendship between the French and Los Angeles and the United States. God bless America, God bless France, and God bless the next speaker of the City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge, for our next presentation. Let me recognize Councilmember Parks. Mr. Parks. Mr. Parks. Let's proceed to the next presentation, then. Mr. Ludlow. Councilmember Ludlow. You ready with your presentation? Not yet? Okay, we'll give it a minute. Okay, Mr. Garcetti, just going in sequence of arrival here. Mr. Garcetti, and then Mr. Weiss to follow.
Good morning, colleagues, members of the public as well. If I can please have all the graduates of the City Jobs Program, please stand up for a round of applause at the outset. Colleagues, it's not every day that we get a graduation ceremony right here in City Hall, in council chambers. And it gives me great joy to be able to share this day with all of you, with our graduates and with their families. Thanks, you can be seated for now. Thank you very much. The Los Angeles City Jobs Program was a path-breaking, pioneering program that took some of our efforts in job training and created an alliance between municipal government, organized labor, and local community-based organizations. Through a joint management and labor project, this was designed to help and to hire welfare to work participants as trainees for apprenticeship positions in the city and be able to take entry-level positions and work up the ladder to become full-city employees here for the City of Los Angeles. The parties that assisted in creating this groundbreaking project were the Community Development Department, of course, which took the lead on this, and also the Personnel Department, the Bureau of Street Services, and SEIU Service Employees International Union Local 347. Since the creation of a pilot project in April 1999, and we have one of the alums of Jackie Goldberg's office, who is now back at City Hall, Sharon Delugat, who helped make this happen, with the Department of Public Works at the time, the Bureau of Street Services, City Jobs has expanded to include other departments. We have Los Angeles World Airports, CDD, Library Department, Public Works, Bureaus of Sanitation, Engineering, Department of Personnel, and the Los Angeles Police Department. As of July this month, 2003, City Jobs has hired a total of 239 Angelinos. And if I can ask Theresa Sanchez and Robert Sands to join me during this, as I finish up my initial comments as well, we'll hear from them in a second. A total of 164 trainees have achieved civil service status. Three are currently on workers' compensation. A total of seventy-two trainees have not gone all the way through, but that's with a success rate of seventy percent, which is an impressive number. And we're proud to announce that fourteen trainees have already graduated. And on July 11th, 2003, amazing totals of 148 graduates, trainees will get their certificates. And we're going to give those certificates to each and every one of you upstairs in the Tom Bradley Ballroom in just a little bit. I just want to say, as Chair of Economic Development Employment Committee, how important this is to me personally, to know that this city is committed to making sure that people have a ladder here into good-paying jobs, that we put our money where our mouths are as a city. We don't just help private employers through our WorkSource Centers and the other good programs we have, get a chance at jobs in other places. But we say, as the city, we know that our best employees are out there just waiting for the chance, just waiting for the training, and that we will help them achieve that, to create better lives for themselves and for their families. So with that, I would like to turn it over first to Theresa Sanchez, who is from SEIU 347, also serves on our Workforce Investment Board, and who's been an amazing voice in making this program possible, but also in bringing economic and social justice to the workers of the city and to those who are the future workers of the City of Los Angeles. So please welcome Ms. Sanchez.
I want to thank Councilmember Garcetti for making this graduation ceremony possible. I wanted to give a little bit of background on the City Jobs Program. For those of us who have been around since this started in 1995, with the planning of how to respond to the city's welfare-to-work implementation policy, it's hard to talk about this frankly without starting to cry, because when we started out, we were facing the federal welfare-to-work reform or deform or repeal policy. We were looking at how can we address poverty in our city? How can we help people get into living wage, permanent jobs with the career ladder, with family benefits, to get their families permanently out of poverty? And frankly, nobody had ever done anything like this. Most of the people we spoke to about this didn't believe it was possible. So we had to really start in 1995, we did a two-year process of research on other programs, other models, and look at what we could do in terms of shaping the city's workforce development and welfare implementation policy. In 1998, this council unanimously approved our City Jobs Program as part of that city policy. And we got the Bureau of Street Services to take the initial risk in working with us, the Metropolitan Alliance, and what became a coalition of over sixty organizations in the city, community-based organizations, faith-based organizations, unions, including 347 and Local 660. And we got the leadership of Jackie Goldberg, Mark Thomas, and Mike Hernandez to lead what eventually became unanimous support in the City Council for this program. So we will be coming to you in the next days and weeks to give you more detailed information about our vision for the future of the city's workforce development policy and how we can make City Jobs a permanent part of that strategy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Theresa. And I'd like to now turn it over to our Assistant General Manager from the Community Development Department, Robert Sands, who will talk about our city's involvement. And please welcome him as he comes to the microphone, too.
Thank you, Councilman. On behalf of the Community Development Department and our General Manager, Mr. Clifford Graves, we strongly support this program. We're dedicated to filling the training needs of the city, and we're dedicated in identifying new resources to be able to give back to our community. This is just the beginning. And as a part of the Community Development Department, our staff, I'd like to recognize and thank them all for their dedicated work in making this innovative program a reality. It's something different and a bit outside of the scope where we were traditionally used to doing training programs. So at behalf of the Community Development Department, we really look forward as this being an initial graduation for the many hundreds or thousands of young people and folks who traditionally didn't have access to City Jobs to be a reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sands. I'd now like to introduce our great Director of the Bureau of Street Services, Tom Thomas, to talk to us about what this job program has meant for him.
Thank you, Councilman. Actually, Mr. Robertson's still the Director. Anyways, as Theresa said, the Bureau was in the initial pilot project. We were the biggest, largest participant. And Theresa, Theresa and I were talking in the back there. We really like to acknowledge also our former Executive Directors, Mr. White, William White, and Mr. Greg Scott, who were agreed to participate. We benefited, the city benefited, the employees benefited. We had this partnership with CD, with the Community Development Department, with Local 347. We have transitioned seventy-one employees into our regular workforce as part of our team. Of these seventy-one employees, thirty-one are females, which we think is great, because you're forming non-traditional type of classifications. These people now have skills as far as tree trimming, landscape maintenance, resurfacing streets, and constructing sidewalks. It's been a benefit to us, helped us to make our delivery of customer services. And we would hope these people would, like Mr. Franco, get forty years in, promoted into higher positions, and be a bigger part of our workforce. Again, we thank you, and we really appreciate our participation. It's been very successful for us.
Now I'd like to bring one of the success stories, a City Jobs graduate forward. Squire Morgan at the Bureau of Sanitation will give testimony about what City Jobs has meant.
Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, good morning. Families, friends, distinguished guests. Bid you good day, and I'd like to thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules to offer some recognition to the participants of the City Job Program. If you knew the road that I took to get here, and a conversation came up about miracles, you'd have to mention my name. If you're talking about life-changing situations, turning your life around, you'd also have to mention my name. Just a little bit about myself, I'm currently employed with the Bureau of Sanitation, Wastewater Collection Systems Stormwater Division. As of last week, I was promoted to wastewater collections worker level two. And my file's not out yet. But let me go back a little bit to where this all started. Because see, there was a time not too long ago in my life when I was homeless. There was a time not too long ago when I was without any type of hope. I began working sporadically down in the downtown area with an organization called Chrisless. And my case manager there, she referred me to the Welfare to Work Program, which in turn referred me to the City Jobs Program, Ms. Renee Moon. You know, it's been said that God works through people, and why not meaning to be overly religious? I feel that, I honestly believe that God will place influential people in your life at just the right time. When I was introduced to the City Jobs Program, I was fully, I was fully ready to do whatever they, to take advantage of whatever they had to offer. I told Ms. Moon when I signed my papers of the program, if you give me just that much of a chance, I'll make a try. Ms. Moon, I hope I took up the money in the bargain. You know, opportunities come few and far between. And since I've been a part of this program, I've been afforded a lot of useful skills. Now I've got a truckload of new friends. You know, every day is an adventure. And I try to pass this inspiration of hope on to new employees whenever I get the opportunity. I'd like to thank Ms. Linda Wallace at Chrisless for telling me about the Welfare to Work Program and the City Job Program, because if she hadn't introduced me to it, I don't know where my life would be now. I'd like to thank Ms. Moon for keeping me under her watchful eye, and always letting us know that we, not that we can do it, but that you're going to do it. You know, she gave, she didn't leave any margin for doubt. You will do this. And we did, as it shows here. And to the City of Los Angeles, I'd like to thank you for a second chance when I thought that all my chances were gone. Thank you.
One of the, one of the important partners in this was Metropolitan Alliance. And I know we had a speaker's card filled out, but I'll just incorporate her into the presentation. If Yardina would like to step forward for Metropolitan Alliance, we'll hear from her as well.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Yardina Aaron, and I work for the Research Arm for Agenda Los Angeles Metropolitan Alliance. And I want to first start off by saying and congratulating the City of Los Angeles for having one of the most successfully innovative welfare-to-work programs throughout the nation. And I'm here this morning to talk about a report that came out of the Los Angeles Metropolitan Alliance in regards to the City Jobs Program and share with you some of the key findings that we found to encourage the continuation of this program. So I'll just go through briefly. I also have copies of the report, which I would like to distribute, which I would like to distribute to all the City Council members for your future reference. So through our research at the Los Angeles Metropolitan Alliance, we found that there were some key components that have made this program as successful as it is, as Councilmember Garcetti mentioned, with over seventy percent retention rate, some of them being the provision of living wages even during the training phase of the program. Another one is provision of both soft skills and hard skills training, the classroom component, and there's also on-the-job training. Another one is job placement, people have a guaranteed job going into training, so they know that they won't have to look for a job while they're going through training, so they have that security. Another one is the provision of critical support services and also the help of the program implementers. As the previous graduate just mentioned, Ms. Renee Moon played a key role in contributing to his success and completion of the program. So having enough full-time trained program implementers is critical to the success of this program. And also the continued collaboration between community-based organizations and unions in the city and continuing to make sure that the program goes forward. There are currently some threats also to the success of the program, which are also outlined in the report. One of them is permanent funding, so we're excited today to see the graduation. Another is reduced number of dedicated full-time project implementers. We have seen that number decrease through our research. And knowing the importance of them, it's important that they continue to be on board and support the program. We also have some key recommendations going forward, some key policy recommendations for this program to ensure that it continues to be successful. One of them is to increase and stabilize the funding. We know that there are over almost 240 successful participants, so there's definitely demand. We just have to make sure that the money is there. Increasing participant diversity and getting vocational English as a second language to increase the participation of Latinos in the program. And also finding alternatives for people who do not meet the criminal record eligibility criteria of the program, to make sure that we're able to include everyone in the success of this program. So we at the Los Angeles Metropolitan Alliance look forward to sharing our research with the council and continuing to work on the success and continuing to work with the city to continue the successful program. Thank you.
In closing, colleagues, let me say two things. One, to all the graduates and those folks who have joined the city family, you are joining perhaps the hardest-working employees in this country, the employees of this city who every day, day in and day out, in all these departments, in each of these bureaus, are out there to serve the people of Los Angeles. And I know each one of you believes in your heart as well, and your success is in your heart, and your passion is in your heart. Secondly, let me just say that poverty does not need to be a dead end in this city. Homelessness does not need to be a dead end in this city. We do not need to look at a mistake, or homelessness as a dead end in this city. Each one of you embodies that hope that we have, not only for you as individuals, but to overcome, whatever the challenges are. And God knows there are challenges out there, whether it's from the community, whether it's personal challenges, or whether it's government. And what government is saying today, the challenge that we have been in the past, that impediment that we have been in the past, is to change. We want to be part of that roadmap for you to personal prosperity and giving back to the community. So thank you from each one of us, the City Council, from the city family, from the bar hearts, and from the local government. And from our own personal, personal compassion, we're the best, we're the best.
Thank you for the group, the Department for all of your work, all of your leadership, the Council, the Senate. What I've been impressed with is that the state of California is one of the most powerful powers in the world. I was reading a statistic the other day, and we're seventh as a city behind Calcutta in terms of poverty, in terms of the difference between rich and poor in Los Angeles. And when you look at the population base in the state of California, we make up one and a half of the population of the state of Southern California region. So opportunities are there. And I want to thank you for putting together the strategies that grace these jobs. We have a lot more to go. But as that study has indicated, the cutbacks that are going to hurt us in the future, the ability to make up those cuts, the creative measures, is going to be the challenge of this body. But another state is a different jurisdiction. Hopefully, our work is, I want to thank you, keep it up, and we'll try our best to continue supporting you. Thank you very much.
And if I can invite all the graduates and your families and guests into the rata, City Hall, just out this way, we'll take a class, sit together. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you very much. You'd like to use this opportunity, we've taken the opportunity to presentations. Mr. Kirk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Garcetti, Lee Lam, Tom Labange, Ludlow, Mr. Kaski, Parks, Mr. Smith, Mr. Yaragosa, Weiss, these members present as a group of representatives of the Council. So I'm going to tell, we have a session, so I have a car there, so I have a car there before I leave. I just want to announce it properly, unless I hear objection. What I'd like to do is run through the agenda, call items special, repass the agenda, and we'll start asuntos from a special, and we're going to start the presentations in our agenda. So, now that the Council is officially in session, Mr. Kirk, please. Mr. Parks moves, and Mr. Garcetti seconds. Commended to our resolutions for approval. Mr. Kirk moves, and Mr. Ray says. Before beginning the regular agenda, there has been a request to continue item 25 to Tuesday, July 15. Petition, 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 petition,
Petition to continue item 25 to July 15. Petition to continue item 26 to July 16. Petition to continue item 26 to July 17. Petition to continue item 26 to July 18. Petition to continue item 31 to the Environment and Waste Management Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee. Petition to continue the Air and Water and the Environment Committee.
Morning, colleagues. I'm here with a really special guy named Alex Fulman. He's 12 years old, and I'm going to read to you the first paragraph of a letter that he sent to his family, his friends, members of his temple, and his schoolmates a few months ago. My name is Alex Fulman. I am 12 years old and in the sixth grade at Heschel Day School in Northridge. I have decided to organize a swim-to-save-lies swim-a-thon to benefit the American Red Magen David for Israel, which is the Red Cross in Israel, as a mission charity project in honor of my upcoming bar mitzvah at Ballybe Shalom. I learned to swim when I was two years old, and I've been swimming competitively in a swim team since I was six years old. I want to combine my interest in swimming and a fun and meaningful community activity for my bar mitzvah. Well, thanks to what Alex did, over 50 people joined him in the swim-a-thon on June 1st, and they raised over $4,200 for this terrific organization that supports the Red Cross in Israel. And it's great that you did that, Alex. It's great that you raised the money. But what's really impressive to me, and what's impressive to us here, is that you just fought this on your own, you went out, and you just created this project on your own, and you got people in the community engaged in helping others in a way that was fun, in a way that was innovative, and in a way that made all of us very, very proud of you. Really glad that you're here today with your parents, Sandra Kosakov, and Howard Fulman, and on behalf of the city of Los Angeles. I want to recognize you, Alex Fulman, for doing a great thing for the community, for setting a great example for all of us. Thank you, Alex. Let's hear from Alex Fulman.
Thank you to Councilmember Wise, Fortuna Delitti, and the Councilmember Wise's office, also the entire city council. I also want to thank everyone who supported me, my parents, my family, my brother Casey, my school, and also Armby, and all the participants in the swim-a-thon. I'm very proud of my small contribution that I was able to make to Israel's emergency medicalization, and I hope I've been able to motivate other young people to contribute to our community. Thank you again for this honor. Thank you very much, Alex. We have an eight-year-old boy here today who just may have motivated to help the community. Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations, Alex. For our next presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Parks.
I'd like to ask the educational team from Foshe, the Center of Learning Center, the center of learning, Senator Mary Lewis, coordinator of the program, and the coordinator of high school, and Nelson Lemus, special education trainee. The reason we have this group here today is that the Foshe Learning Center recently ranked 67th out of 100 best high schools in America. All of the schools were ranked according to a ratio called the Challenge Index devised by Mr. Jay Matthews, who evaluated the international test taken by all students at their school, and invited that by the number of graduating seniors. Last year, Foshe ranked 91st in all the preparatorias. This year, they moved up 44th to 67th out of 100 best schools in America. I'd like to congratulate the Foshe Learning Center for having this ranking among the 100 best schools in the United States, and for an article in a newsweek of the year, identifying the best schools in America for students, the professors, and the personnel of Foshe. It's a group exemplar for a great compromise to improve, and the academic success of the program, along with the community of Los Angeles. One of the things we've heard so much about a few days ago was the decision that our young students are being educated in the city of Los Angeles, and when we put a school in the Central District 8, which has been identified as 67th among the best schools in America, not just in the city, but within the states, I think it's worth the applause and recognition to the Foshe Learning Center. I want to ask Ms. Miller, we're speaking together. Good morning. I'm Judith Anderson Hernandez, the coordinator of the Foshe Learning Center, and I'm Mary Lewis, the testing coordinator. On behalf of Foshe students, our faculty, administration, staff, and parents, I thank you for this recognition. Mrs. Wells, our principal, she cannot be here today. She wants it known that our instructional team is truly a collaborative effort. But it's our teachers who are making the difference. They seek ongoing professional development, align their curriculum to the standards, demonstrate strong teacher-student interaction in the classroom, and are truly believers of equal access and equity for all our students. It's our honor to receive this recognition today, and we thank you.
Well, although I recently came aboard at Foshe, I can already see how Foshe has earned this honor. I think that we have a wonderful faculty, administrators, teachers at Foshe, and we certainly cannot leave out our students and the families. Certainly, we all know that strong schools are a result of strong communities, and strong communities are a result of strong families, and certainly we cannot leave out, lest we be remiss, talking about the contributions of our parents. So once again, we thank you for this honor. Mr. Laban?
Yeah, I just want to congratulate Foshe and Councilmember Parks. Are you a year-round school or a year-round school? So that's a tremendous achievement with that challenge there, and I just want to congratulate, I'd like to say about the community, and its parents, teachers, students, faculty, staff, support staff, the night staff, everybody that makes a difference, and a pretty good councilman. Okay. Congratulations. For our next presentation, Mr. Laban. Okay. Then that concludes the presentation of our agenda. The items called special. That was item number nine, called special by Councilmember Garcia. Mr. Garcia.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I think we're going to have a staff report on this, so I can invite our staff to commission children, youth, and their families, and the president of the board forward. I'm going to turn it over to them to make a presentation on, I hope this is something that all councilmembers will take note of. I know I've had some individual discussions with individual councilmembers about some of the statistics in this report, but I think for each one of us, as we look at what we're to do in our districts, this is a really great jumping-off point for us to understand, you know, where youth in our districts, some of the challenges they face, and where they're headed, how they're doing with education, childbirth, how they're doing with education, and what is needed for pandillas. I want to thank you for the great work that has turned this into a challenge. To the staff, to the experts, and to praise them for giving us this baseline. I really encourage my colleagues to listen as we hear. I want to thank you for this opportunity, and I want to thank you for the opportunities that come. I want to thank you for the efforts that the council members have made, and I want to thank you for the opportunities that come. I want to thank you for the new council members, parks, clubs, and all of the other things. We want to thank you for the opportunity to share the important work that the commission has taken on. It responds to many of your desires to look at how the city can better serve children and families. We know that many of you know who we are, but for some of the newer councilmembers, we look forward to working with you to share more about what we do. We're here today to talk about Children's Day Report, but it's just one piece that gets us to better decision-making on how we invest our limited resources in the city. The action plan for the city's children, youth, and families budget, the Children's Data Report, has been properly laid out in a strategic framework that provides a vision for the future of all cities in the city, and proposes a plan to organize and measure collective, deliberate action on behalf of children and families. Indeed, what you have going on before you is a quiet revolution. A quiet revolution, and you say that's a bit strong for a small commission. Yet, local government has always shuffled programs and resources for children, youth, and their families without any performance indicators and without any accountability. The children, families, budget framework for the city, which will be implemented for the first time this year, is something that the city will be asked to provide a fiscal and policy impact statement. We've already begun using information that's been gathered to respond to the challenge to come up with a new framework to address our at-risk youth. It's not sexy, but it makes sense. It won't make a lot of noise, but we'll get a lot of results. As we talk to you about how to use this information in the next few minutes, please keep in mind, and consider, the scars human that will happen in the event of the first council meeting, the excitement, the emotion, the energy. The concejal, Varego, is focusing on Desmond, taking part in proceedings. Councilwoman Grul, who is the very embodiment of new life on the council, and Councilwoman Cárdenas is stressing the importance of parks and after-school programs for children, whether they be for a family of one or a family of 11. People often ask why I'm so committed to this commission and what it does, but when you think about it, what else is more important? The data, that's what we're here to talk about today. I'd like to turn it over to our outstanding director of the commission, Terry Gawa.
Good morning, councilmembers. Terry Gawa from the Commission for Children, Youth, and Their Families. Our commission president didn't introduce himself, but he's also joined by Dr. Jack McCrasky, who's also a co-chair of our commission. I'm going to do a very quick overview about the process that we've gone through to get to the point of developing our children's data report and then where we plan to go after that. All of you have an actual plan for children, youth, and their families. I want to stress that this is the actual plan for the city's children, not for the commission, for children, youth, and their families. It was approved by the mayor and council in June 2002. And the plan defines five long-term outcome areas that allow us to track how children are affected by the decisions that you make about how services and resources are allocated. The five outcome areas are good health, safety and survival, social and emotional readiness, and success. The commission's efforts over the past few years have been used to build the children's budget, to get us to the children's budget. This information will allow us to evaluate how well we are serving children and families. And the building blocks for the first data report that you have for you and that we'll be talking about today. We'll talk about this on the day of today, and Jack McCrasky will represent this information that you've provided, the demographic information. Then the children and families program inventory, the mayor's office has asked that each of the city departments provide information about the children and families programs that they provide in each department. It will give us the information about where and how the city invests resources for children and families, and that document should be ready by September. After we get done with that inventory, then we will map that information out. So based on the demographic information, based on the program information, we'll have a visual picture that will tell you where the need is, where the children are in our city, and where the current city services and resources are allocated. And finally, then, the children and families budget. That budget will provide all of us with a more in-depth information about how and where resources and services are being provided and used. And the plan is to request this information from the city departments in August as we begin the city's annual budget preparation process. The mayor's budget team has agreed to work with us to develop the process we're going to need to put in place to collect the budget information. We've also been talking with the CIO and the CIO's office about how we implement and institute this kind of system of collecting budget information about children and families programs in our current system. We've included for you a copy of the county's children's budget. I know it's very large, and people...
y la gente nos ha dicho, pero somos diferentes y sabemos que somos diferentes, pero también sabemos que recopilar esta información de una manera que podamos empezar a evaluar y mirar a largo plazo cómo hemos proporcionado servicios y dónde necesitamos asignar servicios es el propósito del presupuesto de niños. Y ahora quiero introducir al doctor Jacqueline McCroskey quien va a hablar sobre algunos de los puntos clave y creo que interesantes de la reporta de datos de niños.
Buenas noches, gracias. Todos tienen la resumen de los highlights y las comparaciones entre distritos del alcalde aquí, así que no voy a molestarlos al pasar por cada uno de ellos. Debo decir que también soy profesora de USC, me dan mucho tiempo voluntario y tengo que darles crédito cada vez que me quedo. Como Alan dice, este es el comienzo de un cambio revolucionario, con suerte. Y no suena muy revolucionario, suena como totalmente común sentido, pero todos sabemos que el común sentido no es todo eso de la larga. Y así la noción básica aquí es que la ciudad en una base regular necesita información sobre las condiciones de niños y familias que viven aquí, no solo sobre los que reciben servicios de la ciudad, pero cuál es la naturaleza de la vida, por así decirlo, para niños y familias en esta ciudad y cómo cambia con el tiempo y en niveles más pequeños que la ciudad es un todo, lo cual es mucho menor para realmente tener un control. Por lo tanto, este libro, esta formación es segundo esfuerzo durante este proceso para continuamente provee la mejor información acerca de lo que está ocurriendo con los niños y las familias, como Terry y Lalo han dicho, también tener un mejor entendimiento acerca de los programas de la ciudad. Quiero mencionar que esto se ha hecho dos veces antes en la ciudad de Los Ángeles, en 1987, 1994, y por lo tanto, no es algo nuevo en la ciudad de Los Ángeles, tiene un inventorio de todos los programas que son, es para niños y familias, lo que desempeñan ciertas personas cuando hacen esto, cuántos departamentos sí proveen diferentes servicios, enfocándose en familias y niños solamente, creo que son separadas de bibliotecas, que es lo que las personas automáticamente piensan, por tanto, también un sentimiento de, un determinado de dónde están esos recursos y estos recursos están dirigidos a las condiciones de vida de niños y familias y dónde debemos dirigir nuestros recursos, por tanto, en el punto de analizar esta información para que ustedes hagan mejores decisiones acerca de dónde quieren dirigir recursos, pero solamente en todas las áreas, en áreas más pequeñas y quiero darles un resumen de esta información, números, aunque yo sé que ustedes pueden leerlo, pero este mismo, nosotros solo tenemos casi un millón de niños, los que viven aquí, hay cuatrocientos setenta mil familias básicamente, cincuenta mil niños nacidos cada, nacen cada año y aproximadamente ochenta y seis por ciento de sus mamás recibieron cuidado prenatal temprano. Los niños nacen en el distrito nueve y la menor cantidad en los que todos hicimos para ustedes y la, es para darle ustedes comparación a todo el distrito, que lo tienen que interpretar esas cantidades, creo yo que los números más sorprendentes que están en juego, concejal de Regosa mencionó previamente, es de que treinta por ciento de los niños que viven en la ciudad viven bajo un nivel de pobreza, bajo un nivel de pobreza, bajo un nivel de pobreza es un presupuesto muy conservativo, setenta y siete mil dólares al año para que una familia de cuatro pueda sobrevivir y, por lo tanto, aunque se doblean estos sesenta por ciento, pero los niños en esta ciudad viven con familias que ganan menos de treinta cuatro mil dólares anualmente para una familia de cuatro. Es una estadística sorprendente, los tres o cuatro niños que viven en la ciudad viven con familias que son trabajadores pobres, que son trabajadores pobres, pero también muy importante que esos niños tengan una oportunidad, todavía tenemos aproximadamente quinientos ochenta mil niños inscritos en quinientos setenta y seis escuelas públicas, cincuenta por ciento de ellos tienen, no saben, setenta por ciento de sus padres están involucrados. Setenta y uno por ciento reciben, quiero hacer una comparación para ustedes, ustedes ven en la parte de atrás de su boletín que tenemos listado por distritos del alcalde, algunos números específicos y decidí comparar distritos del alcalde cinco y diez porque vivo en la línea entre distritos del alcalde cinco y diez. Vivo seis casas en el distrito cinco, pero si solo fuese seis casas hacia arriba y cruzara Robertson, estaría en diez. En el distrito cinco, hay treinta y siete mil niños. En el distrito diez, hay dos veces más esa cantidad, cuando miramos especialmente a los niños que están en la primaria, se ponen, las personas creen que es un reto, queremos poner mucha atención a este, a este, miramos a los niños. En el distrito cinco, hay dos escuelas secundarias, siete mil, una primaria y un tercio menos de ciento. También miramos al departamento de, a lugares de recreación, de parques, no solamente contamos las instalaciones, sino que también encontramos. Pero hay una gran diferencia entre el distrito cinco, que tiene diez mil novecientos acres, y el distrito diez tiene ochenta y cinco acres de parques, y también una nota de librerías que tiene, que es para darles esos números, solamente para darle usted una idea acerca de cómo impactará a estas personas cuando hagan decisiones de policía, solamente son números que piensan ustedes que son dueles, son aburridos, pero significado real en cuanto a las decisiones que ustedes están haciendo de parte de las familias de los niños en su distrito.
En conclusión, solo queremos hablar sobre los cambios efectivos y resultados positivos que podemos presentar a ustedes al consejo municipal, con el concejal de la Banch, muchas veces decía, acerca de conectar los puntos, el reto ahora es muy, muy grande, quería trabajar juntos con la visión de la edad, con el consejo municipal, en el alcance, creo que podemos lograr esto, metiéndome, sería tomar un minuto final para decir que. Quiero hablar sobre esta comisión, en estos momentos tan difíciles del presupuesto, no creo yo que, no creo yo que es la idea correcta, caer en la trampa, cuando está ocurriendo exactamente, entonces C Y F tiene personalmente como decisiones, posiciones acerca de. Hay que ser realistas. Sí, queremos ahorrar, queremos esfuerzo absolutamente, pero no hay que olvidar, solamente importante para el futuro de Los Ángeles tener una voz clara, única para los niños, jóvenes y la familia teniendo la información correcta, cómo utilizarla, cómo asignarla, lo hablamos acerca de parques, cuando escuchamos al concejal de la Cámara de Logos acerca de unos niños en una familia, lo que Parks, es lo que fue para Parks, cuando creció a que pensar acerca de lo que esta comisión puede ser, esperamos trabajar con ustedes totalmente, para que todos los niños tengan la oportunidad de crecer, saludable, bienestar, familias y comunidades. Quiero mencionar también que la comisionada aquí es la trabajadora social, la estatal del año, recibió el premio, también tenemos con nosotros, la comisionada Mantian, es el presidente de los jóvenes en la comunidad, gracias. Señor Garcetti, después señor Lalo.
Creo que fue en el tiempo de Nate Holden, gracias. Y gracias mucho por la presentación. Creo yo, ustedes han sido muy modestos diciendo que estos números son aburridos, no, lancha para aburrirnos, esos números se verán, se han presentado, tenían diálogos con otros concejales, han repasado esto, hay cosas muy sorprendentes, hay cosas que uno no puede esperar, pero repasando esto por la tercera, cuarta vez el día de hoy, lo más principal que debe de resultar, si ustedes son jóvenes en la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Treinta y dos punto diez por ciento de todos los niños está en pobreza y toma doscientos por ciento del nivel de pobreza, es una mejor medida, cerca por seis, cerca por ocho, por ocho por ciento de los jóvenes que viven en pobreza y hay ciertas cosas muy interesantes, compartir esto con el concejal de Parks. Sete, ocho tiene la casa de más. Hay algo bueno que está ocurriendo en distritos en cuanto a cuidado prenatal, y hablamos con nuestro seno, el departamento de salud y miramos las clínicas de salud, en el momento en que estamos pensando en cortar nuestras clínicas de salud, va a ser muy premio para nosotros hacer eso, mirando qué impacto va a ser en nuestros jóvenes y en nuestro desarrollo. Cuidado preventivo de salud, creo yo asegurando que estamos invirtiendo en programas para jóvenes. En el comité de desarrollo de la comunidad el otro día, lo que estamos gastando en intervención, es que estamos gastando uno punto cinco millones, dos puntos tres millones menos de, menos un centavo de dólar en intervención y prevención, eso debe dar los distritos, también un sumario de todo, sea un principio acerca de donde debemos dirigir la policía que tenemos y debemos animar a los colegas a nivel de condado estatal y federal para que dirijan su policía, el distrito escolar también en cuanto a unir todo esto, creo yo que las medidas que tienen en ese reporte son bastante importantes, pasado uno al otro, el nivel, la secuencia local, no solamente en esas áreas, también las queremos incorporar, escuché su último mensaje también bastante claro, gracias de nuevo por este reporte y aquí escuchamos y esperamos que este sea un punto para nuestra policía, hacer que este reporte sea solamente un número, así que estamos en nuestros libretos, para todos, para todos los contributos, empezamos a coordinar a la policía, basando en esto y asegurar poder traer estos recursos a este punto, si el distrito está mejorando un área, podemos, entonces considerar que recursos pueden pasar a otros distritos y compartir la lección desde lo que está, lo que está haciendo el distrito para compartirlo con otro y mejorar las siglas, es Lalo.
Mister Villaregoza, Mister Cardenas y Mister Labanche. Quiero reiterar. Quiero reiterar. Doctor, esto es algo en el que estamos de acuerdo, que la información no sobrará, esto es algo muy importante y, normalmente, un colega me acaba de contar que sus bienes muchos colegas aquí, pero sería muy lindo poder ver esto donde todos están aquí, porque esta información es bastante importante, hay varias cosas también, algo más que darles gracias por este documento, este documento está muy bien la manera que usted ha presentado esto, es muy fácil de leer, es muy dramático, esto ayuda bastante cuando, muchas cosas considera que si le preguntas cómo compara, ustedes han encontrado, han tenido oportunidad de comparar cómo estamos aquí nosotros en otras ciudades en los Estados Unidos de California con la información, usted, señor doctor, encuentra pobreza, cantidad de niños que viven en pobreza, etcétera. No tengo las cifras de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, tiene una proporción más elevada de las familias que viven en pobreza, etcétera. Una de las cosas que a mí es más interesante cuando llegamos a los datos presupuestales es que una pequeña parte de recursos de la ciudad son destinados para familias y para niños, lo que la ciudad hace es construir infraestructura que le sirven a todos los niños y familias y tiene diferentes programas enlocados para niños y familias y como el concejal sabe muy bien, la falta de inversión al principio, para ese rollo de jóvenes y transición, que todos podemos contar, otros algo que la ciudad con nosotros son las tasas de pobreza que tenemos, que tenemos que pagar la atención para que. La información que usted está mirando, es comparada, hay un esfuerzo de comparar clases de tiempo en Los Ángeles, en los últimos veinte años cuando la probabilidad quizás era algo más adecuado en lo que usted ha sido, hemos hecho un descaro, mientras este ejemplo, el estado municipal, cuando el gobierno del condado en los últimos quince años ahora tenemos un récord en todo el condado, pero no hemos excluido la ciudad en esto, pero esto es definitivamente parte de lo que estamos hablando, es análisis del tiempo, si esto era bastante, y por último, no pudiera pasar todo ello, formamos aquí tocante a nutrición, asuntos ambientales, de salud, no más, algo por eso si se hablan acerca de eso, hay muchas cosas que no están aquí, pero hay varias razones por las cuales no están aquí, una es de que la información que está disponible, que está disponible a nivel de distrito y no solo, pero que estamos trabajando, unos indicadores, creo que esto es muy más valor y más importante, claramente, mucho más, también, estaría así que aunque este tipo de información está en este reporte, la comisión cree que esto es parte de, puede mantener la seguridad, así que tenemos a una persona que se enfoca en los asuntos públicos, la seguridad pública piensa, espera poder traer recursos, del estado y estatales a su zona, esta formación es parte de este reporte, de la comisión y por parte del trabajo de la comisión. Quiero agregar, concejal, que ha estado hablando con, acerca de uso, de lugares, de personas que tienen recursos, NAUCD tiene acceso extraordinario a estas familias, ya sea antes de expresar la legalidad para seguridad, ya sea, es la razón por la que tenemos miembro de junta directiva, miembro de nuestra comisión para poder integrar, entonces se siente cincuenta niños que son parte de NAUCD, está muy bien en el comentario último, usted habló sobre esta oportunidad de conexión para otras entidades, justamente consideremos el presupuesto del condado y también acerca de dónde podemos tener oportunidades para utilizar esto, ayudar bastante, pero trabajar con la comisión, espero con nuestros colegas, los que están aquí, los que no están, escucharme, para poder incorporar esta información, utilizar esta información, en las presencias que ya hemos acabado ya tres días, esperamos su continuidad, activismo, gracias por presentar sus asuntos al principio. Mister Villaregoza.
Sí, señor presidente, quiero agradecer a Mister Garcetti por tener a la comisión realmente reportar y testificar en este asunto. Sabes, cuando piensas en qué gran ciudad vivimos, la medida de una gran ciudad es lo que hacemos para nuestros hijos. Y cuando miras el reporte aquí y los datos, ves que Los Ángeles tiene mucho trabajo que hacer respecto a cómo invierte en estos niños. Y creo que el gravamen de este dato, en muchos sentidos, no solo dividiéndolo de la manera que tienes, identificando las áreas de particular necesidad, creo que la mayoría de nosotros intuitivamente sabíamos que si mirabas el nueve, el ocho, el diez, el tercero, estos son los distritos donde estamos dejando a nuestros niños. El reto real, creo yo, es el punto que el concejal Garcetti ha hecho, que es lo que hacemos como grupo, entonces para hablar y para enfocarnos en este asunto, muy importante, Los Ángeles nunca va a ser la ciudad que debe de ser, sí, tenemos muchas comunidades llenas de niños que no tienen seguridad, que tienen, viven en áreas que son solamente asuntos, es un asunto de salud, pero también de salud, mientras felicito el consejo por el trabajo que han hecho, ahora tenemos que, regresar un plan, un plan que considera cómo Los Ángeles invierten, ha respetado, es una manera que es esta, es este gen, de manera que utiliza sus recursos, recursos a nivel federal, federales, recursos geotrápicos, de manera que habla sobre este asunto, que es solo que criticó como una gran ciudad. Una de todas las, muchas gracias señor Garcetti, señora Kawa, y doctora McCroskey, profesora McCroskey, gracias.
Mister Cardenas. Quiero decir algo, represente, concejal Villaregoza. Estamos utilizando esta información ahorita, en programas que eran alcalde a, acercados que miran, consideramos a los niños, los jóvenes que están en riesgo, este tipo de circunstancias para todos los programas que se realizan en la ciudad, donde en los programas, estamos buscando algo como real, estamos, y tenemos, y tenemos en disparitos y también estamos encontrando, no hay un ejemplo donde nadie ha trabajado con, por ejemplo, el distrito, tenemos escuelas, en un dado momento tenemos cientos de miles de niños fuera de escuelas, durante febrero, marzo, abril, con nadie en casa, literalmente, y qué impacto está teniendo el ocho, nueve, etcétera, pero la ciudad nunca ha pensado sobre la aplicación de policía en cuanto a cómo asignemos los recursos y la libertad, pero tanto lo estamos haciendo, creo yo que el primer paso es, la pieza de los jóvenes en eso, tiene programas y es mucho tener una voz clara como ciudad. Mister Cardenas.
Muchas gracias, les agradezco, el concejal Garcetti, por asegurar que tuvimos un diálogo con esta ciudad, también importantes asuntos, a lo que si usted, uno mira este, para que te salga, un plan de acción de dos o tres meses, y me estaba leyendo acerca de resultados en futuro, menciona, buena salud, sobrevivencia, seguridad, bienestar económico, social, emocional, preparación.
nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand six hundred, the one thousand seven hundred, the one thousand eight hundred, the one thousand nine hundred, the one thousand ten hundred, the one thousand one hundred, the one thousand two hundred, the one thousand three hundred, the one thousand four hundred, the one thousand five hundred, the one thousand[1165.12] pero creo que tienen la oportunidad, la oportunidad de utilizarlo con un atención temos y continuar actualizando, creo que será el mejor trabajo que podemos hacer, tocar los asuntos más importantes de la comunidad, eso nos juntan a los que visitan a ustedes porque es uno de los reportes más muy, muy, uno de los mejores reportes que he visto en mi experiencia en mis años, hay que los asuntos importantes y darle un contenido en cuanto a decisiones porque eso es lo que cada sitio me da, considera también refleja los asuntos más importantes y presentar como se usaron, nos estamos donde se conseguir mucho con las fuentes de dinero para tratar con estos y llegamos al control de la ciudad, pregar al condado y al estado para recibir estas fuentes de dinero, para proyectar y darle gracias, gracias por todo ese gran trabajo, al que no participó totalmente, yo quiero darle, continuamos este esfuerzo que creo que es el primer paso y un esfuerzo muy positivo y largo de tratar con... lo más importante es mostrar a ustedes los jóvenes, gracias, señor Reyes, gracias presidente. Cuando no, me hemos empezado a llegar aquí, tuve la playa de Remi con diferente, con el concejal Ladlo, concejal Piero y concejal Parks y uno de los puntos principales que yo traté de explicarles, utilice este mapa aquí. Pon en este mapa aquí, porque quiero tomar ventaja de esta comunidad porque si uno mira el mapa gris, jóvenes que viven a nivel de pobreza, trabajando en pobreza, los jóvenes, miren, si miran una comunidad, esta ciudad ha hecho sus decisiones, uso de terrenos, uno puede ver aquí gráficamente todas las áreas de la ciudad que han sido protegidos, protegidos los últimos veinte, treinta años que han resultado, creo yo, en un desequilibrio de la manera de cómo protegemos nuestra la comunidad donde uno las áreas, escuelas de pobreza es donde uno no ve las comunidades que han sido protegidas por la ciudad. Esta declaración se hace no para atacar a nadie, se está haciendo esta relación gráficamente, mostrarle a todos ustedes, los que están escuchando, los que están poniendo atención a este asunto real, que ustedes tienen la oportunidad de traer este desafío a su distrito, hemos, les hemos presentado a ustedes diferentes herramientas, RS tres, RS cuatro, la luz hoy quiero que se pregunte, ustedes mismos, ¿qué es lo que tomará? Para traer este tipo de decisión, donde ustedes están dispuestos a desafiar las decisiones de propiedades, saldos, grupos de preservación de los jóvenes que no deben decir, ustedes porque no deben de construir casas y las personas de bajo recurso hacen una situación que habla de que niveles de pobreza, personas que están viviendo en los arbustos, familias que están viviendo bajo los puentes que no pueden pagar, por ventas, son las áreas donde está, donde está aquí, donde deben de vivir. Nosotros como un grupo hemos estado contando, los administrarios, los senadores, hemos estado hablando acerca de estos asuntos de policía, estamos diciendo algo por esto, como jefe de plan me puede decir es que no, estamos, yo estoy viendo un tipo de proyectos que tratan con este asunto a nivel que se necesita, yo les invito a ustedes, que me inviten a ir a su distrito, como plan me quiero que me digan, las necesidades de su comunidad donde ven ustedes que se está construyendo, viviendo es personal por recurso, la zonas de RS tres y cuatro está siendo asignado, donde se está viendo que están sus estatutos y si realmente vamos a contestar a este estudio, es hacer algo más de solamente hablar, entonces el reto, que tengan este reuniones de plan, estoy seguro con ustedes, donde podemos considerar zonas RS tres y cuatro, díganme dónde sus comunidades pensan, es como tener, construir viviendas, personas por recursos, el distrito hay que hacerlo, disculpe, pero es la oportunidad que atende para poner, unir esos asuntos, ya que todavía hemos separados, en casos separados, pero este es una relación que tiene que hacer de cómo utilizamos los poderes de plan para tratar con la situación de pobreza, generación de trabajos y mejora nuestra comunidad. Yo estoy aquí dos años, hemos, ya he pensado los herramientas que espero, me faltan seis años para hacer algo en mi distrito, pero solamente CD uno, CD ocho, nueve, diez, quince, la parte de este valle que no tiene protección, es un tema que necesitas, más bien porque aquí es donde está más sobrepoblado y aquí es donde los niveles de pobres existen, gracias, señor Labange. Ed, puedo contestar eso también porque usted es un reto. Es que la pregunta, qué pensaste de la historia en el artículo, de, 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 de,[484.12]